All right, I guess we're ready to start. Good morning. Welcome to this Thursday, April 11th, meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. And would you all please join me in the flag salute?
Let me just do the flag. The United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Hersaug is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
District Five representative is vacant. Mr. Sevison is absent. Mr. Moss?
I am here.
Thank you.
Well, EJ's getting up. We do have sign-up sheets for those wanting to speak on the two main items on the agenda today. So, while EJ's giving his report, if you'd like to sign up, I think they're on the back table there on the clipboards.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. I'd like to start out, one, two, three, four. Okay, we're good to go.
Barely.
So, I think I'll start. Update, we do have a Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. They actually took action and tentatively approved the Placer County Government Center Master Plan update. That was as recommended by your Planning Commission. The item was continued, though, since it was a tentative approval to April 23rd. That's a board meeting up in Tahoe. That's going to be for final action because that's going to be our first round of general plan amendments that we do for the year. So, that's April 23rd. Their board also approved contracts for the Housing Strategy and Development Plan for preparation of the EIR. That's where we're looking at new codes and design standards to reduce constraints on the development of multifamily housing. So, that will start off, kick off that project as well. And one of the other big items on the agenda was the board considered the appointment of the District Five Supervisor Appointment. This was to serve the remainder of the term vacated by former Supervisor Montgomery. I know I saw at least one of you down at that meeting. The board did not take action Tuesday, but they just met this morning at nine o'clock. Just before I came in here, they did take action. They did approve the appointment of Cindy Gustafson. If any of you may know her, she worked for the utility district up there for years, also ran the Resort Association. So, I'm assuming now that that appointment is made, she should be weeks away from Planning Commission appointment for that District Five seat. So, we'll be waiting for that. Let's see, Planning Commission meeting is coming up. So, as I typically do, I've changed our schedule around a bit to accommodate locations and projects. Our next meeting was tentatively scheduled for April 28th. We're going to cancel that meeting. And then, we're going to have, they said 25th, thank you. See, that just, I knew something was wrong with that coming right out. So, April 25th is going to be canceled. We're going to make up that meeting in May, though. A regularly scheduled meeting is for May 9th. That's going to be down here in Auburn. We have a few projects that will be on that agenda. May 23rd is the second regularly scheduled meeting in May. On May 23rd, you're going to be considering the countywide Parks and Trail Master Plan. That's going to be brought before you by the Parks Division. And then, also, we hope to have the draft EIR for the Winery and Brewery Ordinance on the Street. So, we'll do a draft EIR meeting to accept comments on the draft EIR. That's May 23rd. The third meeting.
Plan on an all-day meeting.
Could be. So, then, the special meeting we're looking at in May is the 30th. And that would be a Tahoe meeting to consider the base-to-base gondola. That's a gondola that would be connecting Squaw Valley to Alpine Meadows. So, I said things were going to get busy. May looks like it's going to be a busy month for us. I think Sue's already checked calendars. So, I think we have quarts for all those meetings. Anyway, so unless there's any questions, that's all I have today.
Yeah, I have one question. On the 23rd, when we hear from the Parks folks and their kind of grand plan, are they going to talk about Hidden Falls?
I'm sure that will be part of the discussion.
Okay.
I mean, this is countywide, so it's from, you know, the valley floor up to Tahoe. But I'm assuming that's part of the discussion.
So, they will talk about what their intentions are for Hidden Falls, correct?
Right. But my understanding, and I think you have, I'm not sure if you have copies of that plan yet that I'll send to you, but it's kind of the overarching plan for the county.
I think that's what we're getting today.
No plans yet.
Okay.
We will give you those shortly.
Okay.
I know you guys are short on reading material these days, so.
It was not a fair trade.
It keeps getting taller, okay.
Is the park plan, is that just an informational public meeting, or is that going to be?
I think they're going to be asking for a recommendation because they want to take that to the Board of Supervisors for final approval.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we can expect to hear a lot of folks on that, on Hidden Falls, if that's going to be a venue for discussion.
And just at recent board meetings, there's been a lot of public comment.
Right.
Regarding those.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
As the potentially soon to be not the most junior member on the Commission, potentially, all the meetings that are in Tahoe are at the community center always?
Not always.
Okay, so they do vary?
Yeah. I mean, typically, we like to keep them at the same place, but we have held them other places in Tahoe. A lot of it is on availability of meeting rooms, hearing rooms. Sometimes, depending on where the project is proposed, we may try to do it in that area of Tahoe.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Now, it's time for a meeting for public comment. This would be comments on anything that is not on today's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak before the Commission on that? Seeing none, close that off and go to the consent agenda. Is there anybody on the Commission who would like an item removed off the consent agenda for discussion? Anybody from the public wanting to remove an item? Seeing none, look for a motion on the consent.
Motion for approval.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Sue, the roll call, please.
All right, there we go. Could I have a, let's see, I have a motion by Mr. Cannon and a second by Mr. Nader. Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're past 10:05, so we'll take that item. Ardozo Seymour Ranch subdivision map modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Delaney Varnum with Planning Services Division. Today, we request your Commission to consider approval of a map modification for Lot Seven of the Seymour Ranch subdivision. The project is located at 4260 Great Oak Circle in Granite Bay. It is own residential, single-family with a combining minimum build site of 20,000 square feet. The property is approximately a quarter mile northeast of the Douglas Boulevard and Cavett-Stallman Road intersection. The applicant is requesting approval of a subdivision map modification for Lot Seven in the Seymour Ranch subdivision to remove the Eastern Oak Preservation easement. The Seymour Ranch subdivision consists of 17 lots on approximately 13 acres. The lots range in size from 20,000 to 22,000 square feet. There is 3.19 acres of common area open space. Fifteen out of the 17 lots have oak preservation easements on them, or OPEs. These OPEs were created as a condition of approval for the tentative map for the preservation of existing native oak woodlands and associated wildlife habitat. Lot Seven is encumbered by three individual OPEs. These total approximately 6,470 square feet, or 31% of the total site coverage. One OPE is located in the front yard of the property, southwest of the lot. There's two located in the backyard, one in the south-central location and one in the northeast along the property line. The oak preservation easement along the eastern property line is the one proposed for removal. This easement contains two tree stems identified in these photographs. The property owner indicated that one of the trees were removed by a previous owner, and the second tree was removed out of safety concerns because it was leaning over. There is also an existing live oak tree that is straddling the property line and kind of coming through the fence. This tree is shared by the neighboring parcel to the east at 8510 Quill Oaks Drive. That property is out of the Seymour Ranch subdivision. This shared tree was not identified as a tree in the Seymour Ranch subdivision. The HOA Board had done an Arborist report several years ago where they had the Arborists tag all the relevant trees within the subdivision. This shared tree was not tagged or indicated to be preserved by the OPE. The HOA manages the OPEs in accordance with the subdivision's private CCNRs. Under Section 9.05 of the CCNRs, if an oak tree is deemed fallen or diseased, then the HOA will quitclaim the property back to the owner. The county holds no interest in these easements, and the HOA has provided a letter of support in removal of the oak preservation easement. Today's staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the request for the subdivision map modification, and I can be available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Delaney? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant want to come up and? I don't know if we have any specific questions for you. Is there anything you would like us to hear from you that?
So, we bought this property a year ago, and we down in the future would like to do landscaping in that oak tree preserve that you're looking along the fence, and also a pool down the road.
Okay.
Is there?
Questions for the applicant? We're both, I know one tree was gone when you bought the property. Was the other one also big, or did you remove the other tree?
The, in this photograph, the slide on the left was taken down, I don't know when, but it was gone when we moved in. And then, on the right is a willow tree that we took down because when we moved in last July, it was losing branches.
So, it wasn't even an oak tree?
No, it was a willow tree.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that probably lets you off the hook here with us.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any members of the public who would like to amend or? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, the Commission?
Would like to just mention, before we go too far on the discussions, there is also a SEQA finding of exemption in the staff report. And if the Commission elects to move forward with this, they would also have to make a motion with respect to that finding.
Is that separate or together?
That would be separate, and it would need to go prior to the recommendation.
With that information, do we have a motion?
Well, I can try to make the SEQA motion. Do you want to tell me what I need to say, Clayton, and I can, you know, so move whatever you're saying?
Sure, it's in page six of the staff report.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Staff is recommending a finding that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 1535 of the SEQA guidelines.
Thank you, Clayton. So, move?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
Challenge here with the microphone. Let's see, I have a motion from Mr. Nader and a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we support staff's recommendation to approve the request for a subdivision map modification to allow for the removal of an oak preservation easement located on the eastern property line of Lot Seven in the Seymour Ranch subdivision.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I would also just ask that with that motion, that it also include, that it be subject to the recommended conditions of approval and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Clayton, so move? Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a motion from Mr. Nader and a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
And Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us pretty much right on time to item number two, Placer Retirement Resident Rezone and Minor Use Permit.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. This morning, the item before you is the Placer Retirement Residence Project located in Granite Bay. The applicant has prepared a brief presentation that they would like to give at the end of my presentation. I'm going to move right along here. So, the project site is located in the island area of Granite Bay. This area is surrounded to the north, west, and east by the city of Roseville and the Sacramento County line down here to the south. The 8.7-acre project site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Old Auburn Road and Sierra College Boulevard. Surrounding land uses are residential, and the Woodbridge Estate subdivision is to the south. The Sacramento County boundary is about a third of a mile south of the project site. The land use designation of the site is rural residential, 2.3 acres to 4.6 acre minimum. Surrounding land use designations are rural low-density residential, 0.9 acres to 2.3 acre minimum. The project site is currently zoned residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum building site of 100,000 square feet. Surrounding parcels have the same base zoning but different combining districts. And down here, this is the location of Ovation Senior Living. This site is zoned residential agriculture with a combining minimum building site of 40,000 square feet. That rezone was approved in 2016. This project is seeking a rezone from residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum building site of 100,000 square feet, to residential agriculture with a combining minimum building site of 100,000 square feet. The project is also seeking approval of a minor use permit for the construction and operation of a residential care home with seven or more clients in the RA Zone District. This is the rezone exhibit and shows the area of the proposed rezone, and it would consist of a single parcel. The project was presented before the Granite Bay MAC in November 2016 as an information item, and the notice of preparation, public comment period occurred in fall of 2017. The draft environmental impact report was released for public review for 45 days on December 20th, 2018, and the public review period concluded on February 4th, 2019. The draft EIR was presented to your Commission on January 24th, and on April 3rd, this project was presented to the Granite Bay MAC as an action item. These photos show the existing condition of the site. This photo is taken from Sierra College Boulevard in the intersection of Old Auburn Road and Sierra College Boulevard, and show the existing conditions of the site. The site is undeveloped and supports non-native annual grassland, and a tributary to Linda Creek called the Tree Lake Tributary runs along the project's eastern and southern boundaries and supports riparian habitat, including a number of large mature oaks. These photos were taken from Haskell Way looking south into the site and Old Auburn Road looking north into the site. Again, these photos exhibit the existing conditions of the site, non-native annual grassland in the riparian area. As you can see, these existing mature oaks screen the interior of the site from Old Auburn Road. The project is proposing a minor use permit for the construction and operation of a residential care home with 145 congregate living suites for up to 160 residents. The project would consist of a three-story building with a total height of 34 feet and four inches and a building footprint of approximately 51,000 square feet. The project is constructing a gated emergency vehicle access connecting with Sierra College Boulevard, as well as a looped circulation road with 101 parking spaces, including five ADA compliant spaces. The project is also proposing to install extensive landscaping and bioretention areas, as well as a public multi-use path here. The project is also required to make improvements to Old Auburn Road. The project would be managed by two onsite teams who would reside onsite and would employ approximately 30 employees, including 18 full-time employees. Services provided with monthly rent include three daily meals, housekeeping, linen services, van transportation classes, and activities. No medical care is proposed to be provided with this project. The building would be designed in a craftsman-style architecture with low-pitched gabled roofs, columns, stone detail, and earth tones, and would have quite a bit of articulation in the roofline. The site has been designed to minimize visibility from adjacent roadways. And the site would be graded so that the site would be 10 to 15 feet lower than the existing grade, so that is what is shown here. The building itself would cover 13% of the site, and again, the footprint would be about 51,000 square feet, and would be 144 feet from Sierra College Boulevard, 222 feet from Old Auburn Road. It would be 85 feet from the west property line and 75 feet from the north property line. I think it's important to point out, too, that because the building is angled, that as you actually drive further down Sierra College Boulevard, it's actually much further than 144 feet. It ends up being 186 feet and 213 feet right here, and then, as you go down Old Auburn Road, again, the building is angled away. So, the nearest portion would be 222 feet, that's here, and as the building is angled away from Old Auburn Road, it's 265 feet and over 300 feet from Old Auburn Road. The building would be constructed at an angle to the intersection, which would allow the existing vegetation and the proposed landscaping to further screen views from the adjacent roadways. The project's proposing over 224,000 square feet of landscaping, and the landscape plan shows that about 58% would be open space and landscaping. The landscape plan identifies native and non-native trees and shrubs, including creek myrtle, Chinese pistachio, western redbud, and live oak. A notice of preparation and initial study and environmental impact report were completed consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. The EIR determined that all potential project impacts could be mitigated to less than significant, and the proposed project would not have significant unavoidable impacts. Number of resource areas were analyzed in the EIR, shown here. I'm not going to read them all, but it includes aesthetics, water quality, traffic, alternatives, et cetera. Mitigation measures identified for the project were identified in both the EIR, shown here, and the initial study. All of the mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project's mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. During the public comment period for both the NOP and the EIR, and as well as at public hearings, there were common themes that we noticed through the public comments. This includes aesthetic impacts, demands on emergency services, zoning incompatibility, the feeling that there are too many senior living facilities in Granite Bay already, and that the overall scale of the project is too large for the community. The project extensively analyzed aesthetics, and what the following slides show is the existing conditions of the site, as well as renderings at landscape planting and landscape planting at 10 years. So, this photo and the renderings are shown from the southwest corner of the site. As you can see, at 10 years, the building would be pretty well obscured, and even at planting, the landscaping does a good job of blocking the area. This is from the intersection. At this angle, you really won't see much of the building. As you go further back in the intersection, you will see the building, but again, the landscaping obscures views. This is looking at the project and the EVA. Again, this portion of the building would be set back from the road, but it's angled, so as you go down Sierra College Boulevard, the building is actually further back from the roadway. Emergency service demands was another common theme that we saw in the public comment. The general plan includes these response times, and the South Placer Fire District Board of Director also has adopted response times. These response times are included in the Public Services Chapter of the EIR, and the EIR concluded that the project would not conflict with these response times. The Public Services Chapter also determined that the project would not have a significant unavoidable impact on emergency providers. And this is because the project would have a minor incremental population increase because there is a fire station in nearby proximity. It's about a mile and a half away from the project site. The onsite managers would be trained to evaluate medical issues. Each suite is equipped with safety features and notification devices in the event of emergencies. And finally, security and communal living reduce incidence of crime against the elderly. Another common issue that arose during the public comment periods was that the project is incompatible with the zoning definition of a residential care facility. This is the definition of a residential care home from the zoning ordinance, which says that a residential care home is any family home, group care facility, or similar facility as determined by the director, providing for 24-hour non-medical care of persons in need of personal services, supervision, or assistance essential for sustaining the daily living for the protection of the individual. A residential care home serving six or fewer persons shall be considered a single-family dwelling for all zoning purposes. The proposed project is consistent with this definition. Another common theme we heard was that there are too many projects, senior projects that have been approved in Granite Bay and that the project is not needed. This figure is from the SEQA Considerations Chapter and shows a number of different projects that have been approved in Granite Bay. The ones that are circled in red, these are different senior projects. So, these ones over here, that's Elam Glen, Granite Bay Memory Care, Country House, and Escaton. Down here, you have the proposed project, Ovation Senior Living, and a proposed project over here, that's called Roseville Congregate Care, and that's an environmental review. What I would point out is that these facilities are over a mile from the project site, and they also provide a different service than what the proposed project is providing. These are skilled nursing facilities and memory care, and the proposed project is not proposing memory care or skilled nursing and is not providing any medical care. Another thing we heard was that the project's scale is too large, and one of the alternatives that was analyzed in the EIR was a two-story design. So, this site plan was prepared for that analysis. The proposed project is in blue, and the two-story is in yellow. And what this shows is that even though a two-story building would be slightly lower, the overall mass of the project would actually be larger, and it would be closer to all property lines, and impervious surface area would be increased. This table demonstrates some of the differences between the proposed project and the alternative. Again, a two-story height would be a little bit lower, but only by a foot and a half. In order to maintain project feasibility, the minimum number of units had to remain at 145. A two-story building would be over 17,000 square feet larger than a three-story. It would also have more retaining walls, the building would be closer to all property lines, and there would be less room available for bioretention and landscaping. So, there were three alternatives analyzed in the EIR. There was a no project, no build. This alternative did have fewer impacts, but it does not meet any project objectives. Alternative two, the existing zoning for three single-family residences. This is the environmentally superior alternative, however, it has fewer impacts and does not meet any project objectives. The third alternative was the two-story building. It does meet some of the project objectives, but actually had increased impacts to aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, and energy conservation. The project is required to make improvements to Old Auburn Road. It would not be widening the eastbound lanes onsite, but they would be restriping to extend the left turn lane and add a bike lane. Westbound lanes would not be widened. The onsite eastbound lanes would be widened by 18 feet to accommodate curb gutter sidewalk and turn lane. An abandoned lift station would be removed, and the existing light poles would be relocated. The Arborist report prepared for the project identified 167 trees onsite, including 138 within the riparian area. The project would be directly and indirectly impacting 68 trees, and the project is required to mitigate this impact. The onsite habitat is primarily annual grassland, but there is about an acre of valley foothill riparian, shown in green, and about a half an acre perennial stream, shown in blue. The project has done a very good job of avoiding this area, with the exception of a consign bridge for the multipurpose path. This would impact about 0.03 acres of riparian habitat, and the project is required to mitigate for this impact. The grading plan shows that the overall grading for the site would consist of 50,700 cubic yards of cut and 13,600 cubic yards of fill. The balance would be exported offsite, and grading would occur in one phase. As I mentioned before, this project has been presented to the MAC on two different occasions. The first was in November 2016 as an information item. The first was in November 2016 as an information item, and again, last week on April 3rd as an action item. The Granite Bay MAC voted three to one to recommend denial based on the height enmassing of the building as well as, and potential future land uses. The project is compliant with the height of the proposed zone district, and the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance land use definition of a residential care facility. The project's site has been carefully designed to limit disturbance to sensitive areas and a setback further from all property lines than what is allowed. Retention of existing vegetation and proposed landscaping would further obscure views. The mass of the building is broken up by the architecture proposed, and with the vegetation and the increased setbacks, the overall building would be screened very well from public view sheds. The project's EIR demonstrates the project would not have significant unavoidable impacts. Staff recommends that your commission recommend to the board of supervisors to certify the project's environmental impact report, adopt the project's mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt an ordinance to rezone the site, and approve the minor use permit for the construction and operation of a residential care home. That concludes my presentation. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, the applicant has prepared a brief presentation. I'm happy to answer questions now, or we can wait until after that presentation. Thank you.
Questions for Kelly? I have a couple. The MAC's recommendation for denial, part of that was future land use?
Yes, so there was a concern that what the building could become if this senior facility went away. In response, you know, if there's going to be a change to that land use, they would have to modify their entitlement or seek additional entitlement, as well as conduct additional environmental analysis.
So if it was going to ever be used for anything other than a residential facility, it would need a modification to the conditional use permit and additional environmental review?
That is correct.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly, you did a great job on your presentation.
Thank you.
Mark Loewen here on behalf of Hawthorne Retirement, Hawthorne Development, and I, too, want to compliment Kelly on her very comprehensive review of the project, and also express our appreciation to the ongoing dialogue we've had with staff as we've gone through this process to arrive at this point in time. What I'm hoping to do is maybe tie things up just a little bit, clarify a few things, and kind of get you an understanding and a feeling for what we're really doing here and how we are different from the other senior housing in the area, and I'm going to assume I know how to run this remote control, we'll find out here really, really quickly. I think for starters, it's important to understand where Hawthorne is and where they came from. And since the mid-to-early eighties, they have been on the forefront of developing congregate care, independent living, senior housing throughout the United States, in fact, throughout North America, and have done approximately four hundred plus of these projects throughout North America. All four hundred sites are developed, owned and operated by Hawthorne and by their companies. This is not something where they come in, they buy it, they develop it and they flip it. They buy the property, they develop the property, they own it and they operate it. Right now, we're housing over fifty thousand seniors within our independent living congregate care model, and each one of these that we've built over the last thirty-five, forty years is still operating. It hasn't been turned into an apartment complex or an assisted living or any other sort of use. And I think I'm going to just digress for a minute to give you a kind of an overview of senior housing and where we fit into the spectrum. If you go to the extreme low end of what we would consider services and care, you might consider it a golf cart community or senior condominiums, an age-restricted sort of situation. And at the other extreme end would be skilled nursing, memory care, and what we tend to get mentally lumped into is assisted living. We aren't assisted living. We don't provide those medical services. So we're the step between the golf cart community and that assisted living. We're the step in between, and frankly, a whole lot less expensive than what assisted living would be. So first of all, to understand what we're all about is to understand who our residents really are. Seventy-five and up typically, they're in good health, they don't require medical assistance because I've said we're not a medical facility. About eighty percent of them, they're all living in your community right now. They're your neighbors. They're, and who knows? You might join us someday, for that matter. Most are singles, possibly twenty percent are couples. Sorry, guys, most are females. Let me be real honest with you. And where we find, because they're not moving in to an assisted living because they need help with those things like prescriptions and bathing and dressing, they can do all that on their own, we find the tipping point for a lot of our residents is it's time to give up the car keys. And so one of the services we'll talk about in a minute is that we provide a shovel to take care of it. So we only find about twenty-five percent, maybe a little less, actually bring a car with them. They're interested in new friends and the community environment, and once one of our projects matures, we find a lot of them moving because their friends already live there. And like I mentioned, they seek this out of a choice rather than some sort of physical or medical need. So the services we provide, and Kelly touched on this, is three meals a day, seven days a week, served restaurant-style. Hawthorne has its own test kitchen. They develop their own recipes, and we found through the years, one of the best marketing programs we have is good food. So we provide that for our residents. Housekeeping and linen services, social and physical activities, there's something going every two hours on the social calendar, every day. And as Kelly alluded to, we have two management couples that live onsite twenty-four-seven. So they are constantly available to our residents at all times, plus in each one of our suites, and we'll talk about suites in a minute, we have pull cords by the bed and in the bathroom. So if they do feel ill, if there is an issue, they pull the cord, it notifies the office, our management people check on it, our staff check on it immediately. Talked about the van service, and what we've got is we have a twenty-two-passenger van that is on-demand, scheduled every day. So if they need to go to the doctor, they need to be at church, they need to go to the bridge club, volunteering at a school, wherever it is, they just notify the office for Tuesday, and they get them set up, pick up and drop off. So their need for a vehicle is minimal, if at all. Within the site, we provide them with all kinds of amenities, outside the building, inside the building. We have a chapel, a beauty salon, exercise room, game room, library, coffee lounge, which is very popular, because it also has an ice cream machine in it, movie theater, which has become, I've had a chance to visit, and most of our sites now have a matinee and an evening show in the movie theater, and it's great for Super Bowl parties. Final Four, it's a great gathering place for residents. We also have private rooms for gatherings. I'll show you a few pictures at the end here throughout the building, and about thirty percent of our core is all their central activities, and the wings is where we actually house our residents. All services, all utilities, except for their phone bill, is part of their monthly rent, and it is an annual lease. They don't write a big six-figure check to move in here. It's an annual lease. So the question has been, we already have too many senior housing, let's just talk about that for a minute. Based on the 2018 estimate, current population is a little under two hundred and fifty thousand within five miles of the site. That's going to go up about three and a half percent over the next five years, but the senior population is going to go up more than that, about what, twelve and a half, a twelve percent increase in the senior population. So we're finding that, based on what we're seeing for our type of use in the Placer County and Sacramento area, already the independent living has an occupation rate of over ninety-five percent. Excellent. And as it's projected right now, they're already short eleven hundred of these types of units, what we call our suites. So as she mentioned, what we're proposing is a little under nine acres, one hundred and forty-five suites, housing up to one hundred and sixty seniors. We'll have two single-story garages onsite, because if you have a residence do want that garage with that special car that they're still going to hold on to, we've actually exceeded the parking requirement by about twenty, I think nineteen spaces. In this case, with our huge setbacks, we've got fifty-eight percent landscape and open space on this. We've been very conscientious, especially about the Lynda Creek Tributary, and only a little over thirteen percent is actual building coverage. Within the zoning district, where we've allowed up to thirty-five percent, so substantially less. So what we typically look for in our site plan, and this site fits it beautifully, we try to minimize the development area for large setbacks and buffers, because one of the terms we use is we create a park-like setting. As you might have saw in the diagram earlier, we've got walking trails, we've got respite areas, we've got community gardens within the site, and we also make sure to connect that to our surrounding community. We want the neighbors onsite. Come walk your dog. Please do clean up after them, but come walk your dog. We also, we love the access for community medical services nearby. We want to be near the single and multifamily neighborhoods because they're living there and they want to stay in the community. Like I said, these are our neighbors right now. We have very insignificant traffic impact, especially peak time. Because peak time for us, staff is there because it's breakfast and dinner time. So staff doesn't affect peak time, neither do our residents, because when it's mealtime, they're all onsite. So peak time and overall traffic compared to just about any of these is substantially less. We make sure and provide ample parking because we want to make sure to not lead our parking into the surrounding community. Again, very important to be a good neighbor. We mentioned keeping the building coverage to a minimum. We want to have the landscape open space and create that park-like setting. So on this specific site, and Kelly alluded to a lot of this already, we provide the roadway improvements along Old Auburn to leave that Lynda Creek area alone, leave those buffer trees and leave that as untouched as possible. Site grading and building orientation is set to recess the building down, so especially up on the north side, when you're looking from that side, you're only going to see about the first, or the top story and a half. From that point, plus the way our setbacks are, and I'll touch on those in a minute, we provided that multi-use path along Sierra College, provided a much safer way to get down Sierra College, or get down Old Auburn from Sierra College. Talked about the buffers and setbacks and leaving the vegetative screening and adding to that with our landscape plan. Just another touch on this, Kelly already mentioned that, let me see. Ah, there we go. So if you go around, you can see that the setback requirement on the interior lines is thirty feet, for seventy-four, eighty-six. Over here is fifty feet, closest is one hundred and forty-four, and here is one hundred and twenty-two, providing with a nice, a lot of open space and a huge amount of mitigation for any use on all sides of the site. Just to wrap up, we'll talk a little bit about our suites, and the reason we call them suites is because they don't have kitchens. As part of their monthly rent, they get all their meals, so they don't have cooking facilities. Again, we're not an apartment complex, because apartment complexes do not also include a beautiful dining room, and there's a private dining room as well there, the library, the coffee lounge I mentioned, as well as our movie theater, which is the most popular spot in the building, from what I understand. Just to wrap up, so far as key points, low impact on county and special services, they're suites, they're not apartments. We're not an apartment building, and we can't be an apartment building based on where our zoning is set up. Low traffic. I would rather say no negative impact on schools, because we do provide volunteer opportunities. We create jobs. Kelly alluded to that with eighteen full-time, a total of, I believe, the thirty positions available. We have that park-like setting for our residents and for the surrounding community. We allow the local seniors, your neighbors, to stay in their community and not have to relocate out of the area. Quiet, low impact, and by the way, they are a great neighborhood watch. Nothing gets past them. Long-term neighbor. Every one we've built for the last thirty-five-plus years is still operating as such. Marcus, you want to delve on anything? All right. I'm available for questions as well.
Questions, Mr.? Any questions? Okay. Sometimes the public. I have, I guess, maybe one question here. I know that when it comes to what you want to call it, taxing the service of the local fire district, some of the other facilities around have a large number of calls that, what you want to call them, pick-up and put-backs or what have you. The impression I'm getting is that your residences are not in, would typically not be in need of that service, or they'd probably be living somewhere else, or...
Well, what we find, first of all, is because our residents are a lot more ambulatory, a lot more active, we're obviously, compared with an assisted living-type facility, that sort of situation is less likely on our site. We do have an aging population, so yes, there definitely will be some need for that. The other thing that we do is, since our staff is trained to evaluate the situation, you're going to get a 911 call, most likely from staff, versus them from their private home if they're living at home alone, or from them themselves. If they fall out of the chair and they need to get put back in the chair, and it's okay, we're going to put them back in the chair and not dial 911. I know different facilities are managed in different ways, but we try to mitigate that by our staff being the first people to evaluate the situation versus automatically just dialing 911. Plus, again, they're at a different level of need because they're a whole lot more ambulatory, if that helps.
Thank you. All right. Public comments. Did we get a sign-up sheet?
So I do have a sign-up sheet. Two people are on the sign-up sheet in order, Cheryl Burkema and Sandy Harris.
Cheryl?
Can I give this to you? Hi, my name is Cheryl Burkema, and I'm today representing Defend Granite Bay. Like, five minutes, please, and I'd like to go on the record. My comments regarding the Placer residences is that it's a fifty-one thousand square-foot footprint facility at the corner of Sierra College and Old Auburn. It's across from Ovation's, it'll completely overpower the adjacent residences, and the amount of emergency traffic will be, those residents didn't sign up for this, okay? They're surrounded by residential. At the MAC, the applicant was asked, the residences were not even interviewed about this project. Okay, so I find that objectionable. The facility does not meet the definition of residential care and is congregate care or senior housing. Neither of these are allowed land uses for the zoning being requested. I submitted the following comments to the clerk, and I know they've also been submitted by Defend Granite Bay. The planning commission should deny the proposed rezone and the use permit, minor use permit, to allow for the construction and operation of the residential care home with seven or more units. So that's what it would be if it were allowed that use permit, seven units, not a hundred and sixty, whatever the number is, a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and sixty, in the residential agricultural zone. The facility does not meet the requirement of a residential care facility for the elderly. The California Department of Social Services is the oversight agency. Our CFE facilities at minimum must have a med tech on staff to dispense prescriptions, and they are subject to unannounced state inspections. The proposed congregate care facility does not meet these requirements since no medical staff is on premises, and they are not seeking our CFE licensing. As such, Placer retirement residences is not an allowed land use for the zoning being requested. Noncompliance with state law, legal rules and regulations by persons would result in a crime or civil wrong. Since the proposed Placer retirement residence is his congregate care and does not meet the state requirements of our CFE, the planning director does not have the authority to make a finding of substantial conformance in conflict with local zoning laws and state licensing requirements. The planning department does not have the authority to issue a building permit not in compliance with Placer County Code Section seventeen oh six oh five oh, which is land use and permit tables. A building permit issued in violation of a zoning ordinance is invalid because it violates the zoning ordinance. The board of supervisors does not have the authority to approve a project not in land use compliance. Approval would constitute a prejudicial abuse of discretionary powers. Furthermore, for neighbors in support of appropriate land use versus the county of Twalomee, the court unequivocally concluded that an ad agency cannot approve an application to devote a parcel of real property to a use disallowed by the applicable ordinance when the agency does not rezone the property to a district allowing the use. The court also stated local zoning power is broad since it issues directly from the broad police power detailed in the California Constitution and not from the narrower provisions of the planning and zoning law. The foundations of zoning would be undermined, however, if local governments could grant favored treatment to some owners on a purely ad hoc basis. The use that was talked about at the MAC was, since these don't have kitchens, it could become a hotel. What happens if this business does not succeed? Twenty percent of the residents in Granite Bay would be using this facility, but they're using a hundred percent of our infrastructure. So I'd like you to consider that, please.
Good morning. I'm speaking for the Granite Bay Community Association, and I'd like a little more than three minutes, maybe four. I've been before...
We could do that, Sandy.
Sandy Harris. I've spoken to you before about this rezone. With a rezone and an MUP, this is an in-run around the Placer County zoning code, which allows residential care facilities of over seven patients in RA. So we're going from seven to a possible hundred and sixty on a parcel that's zoned for three lots, and that has cumulative impacts on our emergency services. This is a zoning loophole I have addressed several occasions. Rosehill zoning code would direct this type of facility to commercial or multifamily zoning. One hundred and forty-five private suites for up to a hundred and sixty seniors, age restricted over fifty-five, and the average age, late seventies to early eighties, rented on a month-to-month basis, basically a commercial apartment building. And I believe they do have smaller... And I believe they do have smaller refrigerators and microwaves. They're not one hundred percent free of cooking. No medical services are provided, even though the age group has greater need for emergency medical services. A care facility of about one hundred and twenty residents is under construction diagonally across the street from this facility for patients that require medical assistance, and they have some memory care units. These two facilities are at the fringe of the South Placer Fire District Response Area. Our ambulances respond to Penrun and Folsom Lake, which is very busy in the summertime. They provide mutual aid to the city of Folsom, Folsom Prison, Brocklin, Roseville, sometimes Lincoln. We have two ambulances, one on Auburn-Folsom Road up by King, which is at the northern boundary of our district, and the other one's going to be relocated to Olive Ranch Road, which is more in the center of where Granite Bay is. Granite Bay residents are concerned that our emergency responders could be tied up with calls at these two facilities. This one in particular provides no medical service, but caters to a demographic that has high need for services with the ability to dial 911 direct and not pull the little cord for internal assistance. I would like to quote from a letter that our chief wrote on this. "Thank you for meeting," and he addressed us to the proponents and the county. "Thank you for meeting with Division Chief Ritter and myself last week to hear the district's concerns regarding the impact that facilities like Placer Retirement Residences and others like it will cumulatively have on our district in the near future. As discussed last week, there is local concern from residents and the district that proposed large facilities like Placer Retirement Residences, which have been successful with zoning changes, will cumulatively impact and individually have a negative impact on the district abilities to provide service as its current level." And that's a concern. Roseville also addressed this issue with a letter on the NOP, because they have a mutual aid agreement with South Placer. And even though they have AMR and not their own service like we do, they still have to send a fire truck. Every time our ambulances go out, that fire truck goes with them, and if they don't transport, they don't get any fees for it, and that's a big expense on our local economy. The city of Roseville noted concerns since they operate under mutual agreement aid. They noted that as a retirement community and due to the size of the facility, there's potential for higher-than-normal emergency medical service calls, and mitigation measures should be identified to ensure the potential for excessive mutual aid calls be minimized. And the response on the EIR was, "The first unit shall arrive within seven minutes, total reflex time eighty percent of the time. The second unit, including ALS, shall arrive within ten minutes, total reflex time eighty percent of the time." That doesn't help me. That station on Olive Ranch Road is probably about a mile and a half from my house, and just last week, there was a toddler drowning in a pool in Olive Ranch. If that service had to be down at this far fringe of our community servicing a senior that doesn't live in my community, and I don't know where they came from, that's an impact on my service. What if I'm having a heart attack and I need emergency service, and seventeen is down at this facility, and twenty has to come from King Road and maybe they're at Penrun, and then I have to wait for AMR? That's not fair to me or my neighbors.
Sandy, are we getting close? We've burned up the four minutes and then some.
I know. MAC's concerns address the scale of the project. Three stories, two intents for the site, the height and the possibility it could easily be repurposed to an apartment complex, since it contains individual suites and kitchenettes, or even a hotel. Since there is already a care facility under construction across Sierra College and Granite Bay has more than its share, because we have about thirty private homes, and I talked to a lot of seniors who are going to leave California, take their pension checks, and go somewhere that's more affordable, so to say. MAC do not support this, and I hope that you'll consider some kind of arrangement. If they're going to put this in, they have to come with some... I talked with the chief last night, and there's still no agreement on how they're going to handle all this if they start getting a lot of calls. And you know, Jeff, that there are a lot of calls to Escatton and Granite Bay memory care, and a lot of them for just falls. And so they fall, and they hit their head, and the people there don't want to take the responsibility of making a medical decision for them, so they call 911.
Thank you. Anybody else on the sign-up sheet, EJ?
No, just the two.
Okay, is there... Okay, looks like we have one more.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Marilyn Festerson from Roseville, and I'm here to lend my support to this project. I think it's a great project. I think it's a needed project, and I believe it's in the right location. So I am here to tell you that I believe that this is something that should move forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant like a chance to respond to some of those comments?
Just for clarification, as I mentioned earlier on, we are not an assisted-living facility. We do not provide assisting living services, those of, we call, activities of daily life, the dressing, the prescriptions, all that sort of... We are that step below, so we're not required to be licensed as such. I know there's some confusion about that, because, again, we tend to get lumped in with assisted living, but we don't fit within that parameter, just so we're clear.
There was also the comment about a potential of microwave and refrigerator in the room?
We provide, within each suite, we provide what you call a kitchenette, short countertop, a bar sink, and a three-quarter refrigerator. No, we don't provide microwaves. There's no dishwasher. There's no cooking facilities whatsoever. So the question is, could they bring in a microwave? Absolutely, they can bring in a coffee pot. Keep in mind that all their meals, all their snacks, everything are part of their monthly rent, so there's no need for them to cook on-site. We provide them with what's typically called, by definition, a half-kitchen or a kitchenette.
Okay. There's no other questions of the applicant by the commissioners. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion?
Well, we have a errata, chief. I don't know, maybe... Now, I missed it, if you explain that to us.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
Errata.
By what?
Errata.
Oh, the errata, yes. There was an errata prepared for the final EIR. We prepared that to clarify some of the figures that were noted in the amount of downstream flows, and then we also prepared an errata for the conditions of approval to be consistent with the mitigation measures, specifically mitigation measure by O three as it relates to tree impact mitigation. The very first clause was changed from prior to approval of improvement plans to prior to ground disturbance. That language is actually in the EIR, and then the errata just made some very, very minor clarifications to the language, but there was no substantial changes to the conditions otherwise.
So the errata of the EIR would be referenced in the first bullet point in the recommendation, and then the errata of the conditions would be included with the minor use permit.
Sounds like we're thinking of making a motion.
Yeah, let's see where we go with it. I would like to move that we certify the Placer Retirement Residence for the final environmental impact report prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program supported by and incorporated by reference entirety, the findings of fact, and the findings and attachments in the staff report, including the errata. Anything else?
That's correct. This is, just to clarify, this would be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to certify that, correct?
Correct, thank you. So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Johnson, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to further move that we adopt an ordinance to rezon the project site from an RSAGB one hundred, single-residence family combined agriculture, combined minimum building site of one hundred thousand square feet. The RAAB one hundred residential agricultural combined minimum building site of one hundred thousand square feet, supported by the findings and attachment in the staff report.
And this is a recommendation, too?
Yeah, this is a recommendation of the board, correct?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Johnson, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I'll get it right the third time. Approve the minor use permit to allow for the construction and operation of residential care home with seven or more clients in RA's own district, supported by the findings and attachment in the staff report.
Second.
And just include, that would also include the errata of the conditions, correct?
Yes, so move.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first by Mr. Nader and a second by Mr. Johnson, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so come up on our item number three.
How many people are here to speak on the regional university-specific plan? Can I have a show of hands, please? Okay, that makes it a little easy. If somebody changes their mind, we do have a sign-up sheet. Do you have sign-ups there, EJ?
No.
Okay.
There are one.
All right. Maybe we will take a five-minute quick break before we start this, and we will be back at a little before ten after. Maybe we will take a five-minute quick break before we start this and we will be back at a little before 10 after.
Jennifer?
On, oh, there we go. Good morning. Jennifer Baez with Planning Services here to talk to you about the regional university-specific plan and some amendments that are being proposed. Before I get started, I just want to introduce the team behind me that's been supporting this project. We have Michelle Kingsburg with the CEO's office, Rich Holloway, Rich Holloway, Rich Moorhead, excuse me, with Public Works. I combined Stephanie's and your name, I apologize. Shawna Purvines with Planning Services. We also have Mike Weber, the Deputy Chief with Cal Fire. Mike Webb. I get so nervous just talking people's names, I apologize. And Nick Papani with Rainy Planning and Management. So the requested actions today are to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on an addendum, approval and of addendum, approval of specific plan amendments and amendments to the development standards design guidelines, and approval of amended and reinstated development agreement. Getting back into the history of the specific plan, the plan was originally approved in 2008. It was a master plan community with 1,157 acres with two components. The first component being the community, which totaled 3,232 units. It also had 22 acres of commercial and 220 acres of open space and public facilities. The second component being the university piece, which was a conceptually planned campus to accommodate approximately 6,000 students and also provide housing for academic students, administrative. There was also some performing arts and athletics facilities and a retirement village, as well as a 40-acre private high school that was proposed on the university piece. But the actual proposed plan for the university would have to come in as a master plan that would be approved by the Board of Supervisors. In addition, I wanted to point out a couple of the major arterials that were proposed. This is future Watt Avenue or Santucci Boulevard, and then the main university arterial, as well as 8th Street. We also have A Street, B Street, and C Street. And I include those because as I walk through this presentation with changes, I'll refer to those areas. Giving you some regional context, this is in the southwest corner of Placer County, bound by the east by Brewer Road and to the west by the city of Roseville, and notably the West Roseville Specific Plan, which is actually the Sierra Vista Specific Plan. And also, this area is located in the county general plan area. Again, the site is zoned, specific plan for regional university, and this aerial is showing the current land use as all agricultural. The land use diagram presented here is the 2008, 2019 specific plan. Again, noting that the acreage and the units, 1,157 acres and 4,387 acres, have not changed. So the units and the acreage are substantially the same, as well as the footprint for the roads and open space really remain substantially the same. I'm going to walk you through a series of slides that is going to compare what's the changes that are being proposed with this. But really, the two main changes that are being proposed with the specific plan are relating to transferring 963 residential units from the community portion of the plan onto the university, as well as some changes relating to financing and fee structures for public facilities and backbone improvement. These changes that are being proposed are substantially consistent with the original project objectives of the original specific plan. Residential density adjustments, again, proposed on the left here in this diagram is the 2008 approved plan, and on the right is the proposed amendments today, the 2019 plan. And below is a table depicting the acreage adjustments. So to accomplish the shift of the 963 units, we have to balance the leisure. They do that by adjusting four MDR sites, which is approximately 85 acres, to LDR sites, which are shown on the right, as well as two, three HDR sites. One becomes an LDR site and one becomes an MDR site. In addition to that, they've adjusted down the density per acre for all of the land use categories, low, medium, and high. Low has gone from four to eight acres to three to seven acres. Medium was adjusted from eight to 16 acres to seven to 13 acres. And then high density actually increased, went from six units to 25 dwelling units per acre to a 13 to 30 unit. The total unit count in the community is now 2,269. And as you can see, the university housing has the additional 963 units. And the total university housing is 2,118 units being proposed. The affordable housing, again, on the left is the 2008 plan and the right is the 2019 plan. Originally, there were sites identified within the community plan that would provide for low and moderate income, but all of the very low income was proposed on the university. With the updated plan, there's two sites being proposed for affordable housing that would accommodate the required 2,00, excuse me, 227 units. Parcel 21 is an HDR site located right here, which would have 182 low and very low, and parcel three, a 45 moderate unit, and it's an MDR site. These proposed changes are consistent with the requirement to provide 10% affordables in the 4.42, 4% low, very low, and 2% moderate housing policies. And commercial adjustments, again, shown on the left, the original community plan. The commercial site was located along University Boulevard at 8th Street, and is proposed to be relocated to University Boulevard and Santucci Watt Avenue. There's also been an increase in the acreage by 1.3 acres, and the commercial mixed-use sites, which are located on the eastern edge of the university, also have an increase of one acre. The adjusted park acreage, with the population being reduced from 7,427 people to 5,461 people, the park acreage went down. The original plan had five park sites with a landscape island along C Street, and the revised plan identifies three sites and drops down its 12 less acres of park. Adjustments to the public facilities, the original plan identified a two-point acre site for fire and sheriff located at 8th and A Street, as well as a quasi-public parcel adjacent to that. The proposed new plan relocates a fire station site to 8th and B Street, as well as identifies the option for a service center to be provided on the university site. And that will be determined when the master plan comes in, if there's a need for sheriff service. And the adjacent public quasi-public site was also removed. The circulation adjustments, very similar layout to each plan. The proposed changes have to do with A Street, excuse me, with A Street not going through and connecting to 8th Street. That will potentially become a local street, that'll be determined with the further subdivision into a small lot map. And then there have been some roundabouts proposed to be eliminated, the two that were originally located along C Street and one that was originally located at A Street and 1st Street. There's also some interim detention proposed with the new specific plan or the amended specific plan. The interim detentions are shown in the green on this exhibit. And would cover parcel 23, which is CMU site, parcel 20, an HDR site, and a portion of parcel 24, which is an LDR site. The amended and reinstated development agreement is attached and included in your packet. Really, that has to, the major change is the financing and fee structure. And there, they're going to Amelaruse districts to help build improvements, as well as provide services in the future, as well as we're adjusting to a fee-funded with county constructed for public facilities. This is consistent with what the Placer Vineyard specific plan has been proposing to do. In addition, there is an option for the parks proposed in this area to be annexed into the Placer Vineyards Park District. And again, we set our affordable obligations, it's consistent with the 10% 4.42. And the development agreement's been adjusted to set the timing of construction, consistent and with market rate, as well as discussing the affordable obligation for the university, which will be reviewed and determined with the development of the master plan. For SEQA, there was a comprehensive SEQA and EIR was performed back in 2008 with the approval of this project. For review of this proposal, there was an addendum that has been prepared and is included in your packet. And the addendum determined that no substantial changes were proposed that would require major revisions to the previous EIR. There's no changes in circumstances and there's no new information that's been provided. Therefore, no additional environment review beyond the 2009 certified EIR is being required. There were a couple mitigation measures that required modification based on the land use changes. The two mitigation measures were required revised for the construction of the fire station. The 2008 mitigation measure had the construction 18 months after the first building certificate of occupancy. With the new mitigation measures have been revised, that the fire station site will be dedicated with the first parcel map. The improvements to the fire station, including access, grading, water sewer, will all be done with the improvements of the adjacent 8th Street, as well as, they'll be in this station, this facility will be added to the regional fire fee program for collecting fees. And for the fire services options, the mitigation measure's been modified to provide options of service out of Dry Creek or service out of the Placer Vineyard Station, the future Placer Vineyard Station. Enter into a service agreement with an adjacent jurisdiction entity, as well as the county, if determined, they could construct the fire facility at the 1,100 building permit. And there are some obligations for the remaining building permits to be issued to upfront fees for the construction. Mitigation measure was also clarified to reflect the changes on the fire, excuse me, the sheriff service station, to clarify that that will be determined with the master plan for the university. Mitigation measure was clarified for the park acreage, go from 38 acres to 27 acres. And a mitigation measure for cultural resources was modified. And we did do an SB 18 consultation for the required law. And there was a request to add a clarification that there's notification and consultation required if significant resources were found. There are some other planning documents, as I mentioned, that you'll be making a recommendation on today. The development standards and design guidelines have been updated to be consistent with all the changes that we've discussed here today. And that's included in your packet. And we also have an approved infrastructure plan that was from 2008. And that will actually be updated with the first map, tentative map process that comes forward with this, and will be revised. I also wanted to note, included in your packet, there were two public comments that we received, a letter from the city of Roseville dated April 9th, as well as a email from Larissa Berry emailed on April 10th. And with that, I will take questions.
Jennifer, I grew up in that general area, and I know that it tends to have, can have some very significant flooding issues, just because it's out in the flatlands. The water coming down out of the hills just tends to collect all over the place down there. And I saw that you referenced the detention areas in there. Are they greater or about the same as was required initially? And I assume that this had, Center County, which obviously was expressing a lot of concern about the additional water that might be coming in their direction because of covering more surface with these projects. Or, I guess, answer the first question, is there any real change to how much detention area is in this project?
I think with the original 2008 approval, there was a drainage master plan that hasn't substantially changed. I think the only thing that's changed about that is that option for some interim detention if needed. But beyond that, I'll have to kick it over to engineering and surveying, Phil Franz.
Phil Franz, engineering and surveying. Jen's correct, nothing really has changed, except for there's now a provision for an interim location that would handle the detention and retention from the site that ultimately may be moved to its originally approved location.
I just want to make sure that there's still sufficient area to hold during high-peak periods of water. And the other question I had might be better addressed by Shawna, because it's on housing. It's acceptable, I'd like to ask her to respond to this. Since you're our housing guru, especially as it comes to affordable housing, since there's a shift in this with housing moving into the university area, I just want to make sure that we aren't getting mask saying affordable housing that might be more student housing. And I guess I would ask you, because obviously you're the advocate for really getting some affordable housing done in Placer County, is what we're looking at now as good or better than we had previous?
So Shawna Purvines, Planning Services. So as Jen mentioned, the original approval of the plan actually had on the community side just the moderate and the low housing for the plan, and all of the very low was shifted to the university side. Under the revision, we've split them more equally. So now the community side will meet its 10% obligation based on the units built on the community side in moderate, low, and very low. So that helps to disperse the affordable obligation on the community side. The units that are shifted over to the, I'm sorry, I said the community side, right? I still flip those back and forth. On the university side, we just, we don't, we know a maximum amount of units that can be built at this time underneath the specific plan, but we don't know exactly what types of units until we get the university master plan in, what those will be. Some forms of student housing do take the form of dorms. Generally, under that term dorms, they would not meet the state building definition of a unit. But there's also a lot of other types of student housing. So if those units, if the student housing did, you know, met the unit definition, they too would be obligated to meet their affordable requirements. As well as we're anticipating on the master, on the university side, faculty units, staff facilities, as well as student facilities. So I guess really, in the short answer, I think... So I guess really in the short answer, I think that we are getting basically the same, 10% of the units that are built in the plan will meet their obligation.
But the balance, or the breakdown is something you're comfortable with as?
Yes, particularly at this point, just, you know, not knowing what the university is going to be bringing to the table as far as housing needs.
So I just, I guess I wanted to find that you were giving a real endorsement for where it's going. It's, this is, again, your charge to keep an eye on what's happening with these projects.
Yeah, and again, you know, the, the project itself, the, the specific plan is meeting its 10% obligation.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, don't, don't, don't leave yet.
And you thought you were done.
Yeah. Yeah, in the development agreement, it's talking about phasing of the affordable housing. Maybe you could explain that. I'm trying to read it, but I'm confused.
Phasing onto the community side? So the, the, the plan is anticipating at this point to be built in two separate phases. So there's sites that have been identified to accommodate the affordable housing. Some of it'll be in the first phase and some of it'll be in the second phase. They, the, the project as a whole will still meet the 50%, 75% thresholds for when those units need to be designed and built. It'll just be based on each of those various phases.
So on the community side, is that fee-based or the county paying for that or?
No, at this point, they're anticipating the construction of the units.
What, what is that now?
The, the, at this point, there is no fee. This is, there's, so there's no, they're not proposing an in lieu fee. At this point, they're anticipating the construction of the units. But just in the different phases, either in the first phase or in the second phase, under the community side of the plan. So we haven't, we haven't addressed the university side of the plan yet.
Yeah, just the community side.
Just the community side, yeah. So yeah, two different phases, two different sites for affordable, to meet their affordable housing. Each one will be done as, as the development agreement lays out, just kind of like Placer Vineyards, at the 50% mark of the, of the single-family units. They'll need to come in and, and provide an achieved design review for the, for the project and before 75% of the single-family units being built. They'll need to construct those affordable units.
And so, yeah, basically, the developer's going to put those in and the houses that they build in the community are going to pay for that or the difference? Or how, I mean, how do they pay for these?
At this point, it's, it's the obligation of the developer to construct those units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet. Maybe you're not going to be the right person, but if, once I tell you what the questions are, that person might be able to be, to step up. My questions lie within the area of, a little bit with what Richard just said, but, but more on the public facilities financing plan and the urban, urban services plan. So if you look at page 10 in our packet and in the, under that category, you know, DPFFP, there toward the end, I will read this. That is, "The applicant proposes, consistent with the Placer Vineyards specific plan, to shift away from a fully-delivered capital facility and park program to a hybrid program where the developer would construct certain park improvements, but pay a fee for all the other capital facilities, thereby shifting the ultimate responsibility for construction to the county for such facilities as occurs throughout the balance of the county." That seems to me very nebulous and vague, and it's based on assumptions. And the assumptions are having to do with the economic conditions at the time. So I would like for someone to address that, please.
Sure. Good morning. Michelle Kingsbury with the county executive office. In terms of public facilities, I'll start first with the fire facility, which is the first public facility, similar to what we did with Placer Vineyards and RioLO Vineyard specific plan when we updated those back in 2015. We shifted from a developer construct kind of model to that they're going to be absorbed within our regional fee program for capital facilities. That allows the county to determine when the best, you know, where we need the facilities as development progresses through that area. Certainly, we didn't want a situation where someone's required to construct a facility, but we're not ready to staff it and things like that. In terms of the park facilities, that's the other kind of capital facility side. Correct me if I'm wrong, folks in the audience, but the developer would construct the park facilities and trails and amenities. They'll pay a regional rec fee that's included within the development agreement as well to meet their regional recreation obligations. Our planned regional recreation facilities are located in Placer Vineyards. We have two large community parks, which would have a multipurpose center, things like that. There was an aquatics pool. And so they'd be contributing that fee toward upsizing those types of facilities that are meant on a regional basis. Hopefully, I've answered. Give me a look.
No, I'm not giving you a look. And if I look mean, that's not what was my intent at all. Thank you, thank you for elaborating. But I'm, I'm still, I guess, not convinced about the assumptions that are economically predicated because, correct me if I'm wrong, could the board of supervisors ultimately decide that they want to change the funding structure in that area? And that's all lies in District 1, which is the area that I happen to come from and, and represent? And if the board of supervisors so vote to change that funding strategy entirely in a few years from now, then I wonder about the obligations that are, that are, that are specified here and how they will be put forward.
Excellent question. Certainly, we can, we can kind of break it down with the, the fire facilities. We have three planned new fire facilities within that area, two fire stations planned within the Placer Vineyards specific plan area and one fire station planned within the regional university. The two fire stations in Placer Vineyards, we anticipate certainly the first one that's located off the Watt Avenue to be the first one that probably develops in that area, just based upon, and you're well aware of all the Placer Vineyards items that come forward, the, the property owners that wish to develop and things like that. So it's a progressive. We look for probably a station on Watt Avenue to go first, and the one on Paliday to go second, and then the one up in regional university to go third. And they'll all pay into this fee program. It's a countywide fee program. I believe the only specific plan area that wouldn't currently be included in that is the Bigford Ranch one. But otherwise, both RioLO Vineyard, Placer Vineyards, and with this development agreement, we're gonna, we're proposing to absorb regional university within that fee program. Operate similar, like a traffic fee program and things like that as well, where you're collecting fees and then constructing the facilities. You can think of it that way. On the park side, we typically require the developers to construct both the neighborhood parks, which are planned in the facility, as well as the trails. They may have a separate, what we call, infrastructure fee program, which is designed to provide them a financing mechanism for reimbursement. But they're required and obligated to construct those types of facilities. Where we differ sometimes is on the regional rec. And certainly with this specific plan, we're proposing that regional rec fee that would contribute toward upsizing, as I mentioned, those facilities in Placer Vineyards. Hopefully, it's a little bit more clear for you. But certainly, it's the direction that we've approved, both in RioLO and in the Placer Vineyard specific plan. And we're proposing to be consistent with that, with this specific one.
And that was the decision that was made in 2015, then?
That's correct.
So how, how did we handle things before 2015?
Prior to that, you can think of before the economic crash, most of this stuff was planned as a developer type, developer-constructed type of facilities based upon certain triggers. We've moved into more having a global fee program, where we kind of maneuver those monies where the needs are and, and work toward that.
Okay, so it's relatively new, but the, but, but you see my, my point about the assumptions that are economically based?
No, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go to public comment. As we get the sign-up sheet.
Morning, planning commissioners. Chad Roberts here on behalf of University Development Foundation. First off, I want to introduce the applicant team. We have Julie Hansen here, Al Johnson, as well as McKay and Somp. So if you have any questions, whoever the right person is on the team to answer them is happy to do so. Also, wanted to just quickly thank staff, CEO's office, SEEDRA, planning, or sorry, engineering and surveying for all their work getting, getting this project here today. It's been, been a ton of work. I just wanted to address a couple of questions that, that were raised. With respect to the affordable housing obligations, the community property and the affordable, I'm sorry, the community property and the university property both have an affordable housing obligation. On the community property, the affordable housing obligation, the 10%, is going to be met entirely on-site. So to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what used to exist versus what exists now, under the original development agreement, there were 316 affordable housing units required for the community property. And only 227 of those were going to be built, I'm sorry. I'm looking, looking at my numbers wrong. There was, there was an obligation of 316. Today, there's only an obligation of 227 units because the number of units have decreased on the community property. Yet, when there were more units required in the original specific plan, only 190 were going to be built on the community property. Today, today, we're going to build all 227 on the community property. So that's the 4% low, 4% moderate, and 2% very low. And there is that construction obligation within each phase. At 50%, they've got to be designed. At 75%, they've got to be completed. And then with respect to Mr. Cannon's questions regarding the parks, the neighborhood parks, that obligation's entirely on the developers. They're going to be constructed, you know, concurrently with development of the housing units. And, you know, this project isn't big enough to build its own regional recreation facilities. So there's a development agreement fee wherein every single unit is going to pay towards those facilities, for example, in Placer Vineyards. I think that was, was everything I had on my list. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Applicant team is happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think, just thank you for your time today and respectfully request your approval of the recommended actions.
Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
DJ, how many people we have?
Just Cheryl Burke, come on.
All right. Cheryl?
Hi, from Granite Bay. I, I handed my comments in and I'd like them to go on record, please. I think that what Larissa Berry submitted on behalf of Defend Granite Bay deserves more than a one-liner. I think it actually deserved a slide in terms of her comments and them trying to at least address some of the concerns about the environment and affordable housing. So I'd like to read a few things from there. In terms of the requested rezon and housing unit transfer is not categorically exempt from CEQA. The increase in single-family homes and reduction in affordable and low-income housing has not been analyzed in the jobs-to-housing ratio. Full impacts cannot have been accounted for across all elements of the FEIR, including land use, biological resources, open space, aesthetics, and housing mix. This drastic shift in the housing mix has apparently not been reviewed under the new VMT being established and soon to be adopted by the state. Since the finalized plan is to extend for 80, approximately 80 years, this new metric must be considered. It is fair argument to state that this housing shift will trigger a significant increase in vehicle miles traveled since commercial land is being sacrificed for high-end residential development. This perceived gift to the developer by granting high profits for more than double the number of LDR homes in acreage is a direct loss to the county of significant dollars of in lieu mitigation fees for 10% of 963 units and/or required construction of workforce housing. This is in direct conflict with state rules regarding the identified housing crisis in California. The units being used to balance the equation are not equivalent units. Student housing does not equal affordable housing. Granting a rezon at this time is unnecessary and premature since a university contract has not been signed. It is fair argument to state that there is no guarantee that a university will ever materialize based on the number of applicants that have withdrawn beforehand. Until such a time that a contract in terms have been finalized, the planning commission should maintain the housing mix terms that have been final, that were accounted for in the original FEIR. The pattern of practice for this and numerous other projects throughout Placer needs to be addressed in a cumulative fashion. Time after time, the county circulates an FEIR, then categorically increases single-family units and acreage in LDR and reduces total acreage and numbers for MDR and HDR. Impacts to the community are staggering. Until such a time that the county has addressed the total number of affordable, low, and very low-income housing units lost and has adopted a housing policy with measurable standards, the rezon and housing transfer should be denied. We just went through the government center and we don't have a housing plan yet. And I know people are working on it, but it's the cart before the horse. How can we continuously approve infrastructure and projects before we have an actual plan with an amount of affordable housing? So we recommend, we ask that you do not recommend this and that you consider some of the affordable housing numbers and the environmental impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close off public comment, bring it back to the commission.
There are way to get the recommendation.
Wayne, you sound like you're ready again?
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make the recommendation to the board of supervisors, is that correctly? To adopt a resolution approving an addendum to the certified regional university specific plan, finally, final environmental impact report and amendments to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, attachment B, supported by the findings contained within the staff report.
Got that covered?
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second? Roll call, please, soon.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Johnson. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to further move a recommendation to the board of supervisors to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the regional university's specific plan, attachment C, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Johnson. Vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move, a recommendation to the board of supervisors to adopt an ordinance approving amendments to the regional university's specific plan, development standards and design guidelines, attachment E, and supported by findings contained within the staff report.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
First by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Johnson. A vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move, a recommendation to the board of supervisors to adopt an ordinance approving the amended and restated development agreement by and between the county of Placer County and Placer University Community Property LLC and Placer University Project LLC relative to regional university's specific plan, attachment B, and supported by the findings contained within the staff report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a first by Mr. Nader and a second by Mr. Johnson. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, I think that's end of business for today. I thank everybody for their attendance and participation in the meeting. We will see you next time.